Let's call this meeting on regular media Ketchikan City Council order, please follow roll.
Gage?
Here.
Kuyfert?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Kuz?
Here.
Severtun?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We do have a special guest in the house, I see Sadie and Mrs. Claus here. I was wondering if you could come up to the podium for us?
What are we, to get the third degree now?
You betcha.
Raise his hand. Santa tells no tales.
You two have been such a wonderful addition to the community and what you guys do, and we wanted, as a city council, to take a moment and to thank you and recognize that. And I have a resolution here I'd like to read and then present it to you. A resolution of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska honoring Jim Wingren and his wife Connie for their service to, love of, and the community of Ketchikan, established effective date whereas Mr. and Mrs. Wingren have worked tirelessly to bring the spirit of Christmas to children and adults of Ketchikan, whereas Mr. and Mrs. Wingren in their role as Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus have brought joy to children, their parents attending many annual local events, whereas Mr. and Mrs. Wingren have heard the wishes of numerous Ketchikan children, taken countless photos with local children, and whereas the Wingrens have served this community in that capacity for over forty years, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska has followed section one, the city of Ketch- the council of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska wishes to honor Jim and Connie Wingren for bringing the true spirit of Christmas alive in the hearts and minds of all those children of Ketchikan. This resolution shall come effective immediately upon passage. Jim, Connie, we just want to thank you and give you the recognition you deserve for making this town so much better. This town is a wonderful town.
Well, thank you. And actually, you can blame the favor of commerce for this happening.
When they get up there, we'll tell them.
Fifty-three years ago, I showed up for work one day, and somebody from the chamber called, "We need Santa for Santa Claus coming to town on Friday after Thanksgiving." And I was a little rotund at that time, and I said, "Hey, it gets me out of the store for three hours, why not?" And that was the beginning.
All right. Thank you, Dermot. I'll go ahead.
Thank you, and we haven't stopped. And it's an honor to be part of this community and to serve all these children, families and adults. They're beautiful people, and we want to thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. One ho, 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 on the way out the door.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. All right, this brings us to public hearings. The first public hearing is Resolution seventeen twenty-six eighty-five, admitting the two thousand seventeen general government operating capital budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the fire department of three thousand dollars and twenty- of three thousand twenty-five dollars. Is anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that public hearing. The next one's a public hearing on Resolution seventeen twenty-six eighty-six, admitting the two thousand seventeen Ketchikan Public Utilities Operating and Capital Budget to Provide a Supplemental Appropriation for Electric Division of five hundred thirty-five- thirty-six thousand. Is anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that public hearing, and we'll have a public hearing on Resolution seventeen twenty-six ninety-seven adopting the budget for the year two thousand eighteen appropriating from the general government funds for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Is anybody here to speak to that? We will close that public hearing. That brings us to public hearing Resolution seventeen twenty-six eighty, adopting the budget for the year two thousand eighteen appropriating from the Ketchikan Public Utilities Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that. That brings us down to communications. We have stuff laid on the table. I believe only one, Bob said only one of them has a motion we'll bring up when we get to the budgets. I thought we'd get through the agenda and then go back to the two budgets unless anybody has a problem. Next is persons to be heard. And I think it's Carrie? Is that?
Kari.
Carrie? Come on up, Carrie.
Good evening, honored mayor and council members. My name is Kari Montero, and I'm currently the youth advocate at Ketchikan Wellness Coalition at six oh two Dock Street, Suite one oh eight. The organization I'm representing today is Ketchikan Youth Support Network of the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. Ketchikan Youth Support Network is a youth-led group and adult-mentored initiative that promotes healthy lifestyles such as abstaining from drug and alcohol use, maintaining healthy diets, mental health, self-esteem, and healthy relationships. Last year, we accomplished a cook-off event that took place in January, Jerry, sorry, January, that educated teens and teachers about balanced meals. We also did a community art project last May that incorporated positive messages that teens wrote about themselves, and that was displayed in the art walk last year. Right now, we are currently working on ideas for our next cook-off, which will take place in March. The ideas are yet to be determined, and of the other art, community art project, that too. In the future, we hope to be able to plan events and collaborate with more organizations about the ongoing health issues within the teen population. I'd like to base saying that there's two sides about the thoughts of marijuana. As one believes it has great benefits, as the other thinks it's terrible and awful. As now marijuana has become legalized in Alaska, there's nothing we can do about it, which is the common misconception that is always thought, which of course, the answer is no. There is a legal limit and a law about smoking in public. With two shops in town, I already believe there's a problem with people smoking in public. The thing is, is not everyone wants to smoke it, so why share it with other people? People often believe marijuana has no effects on themselves, but it does, considering it can increase your chances of having a heart attack and increase anxiety in the short term, but in the long term, lead to addiction, relationship problems such as violence and support school performance. As growing up in Ketch- as growing up in Ketchikan, I didn't realize that I was growing up around marijuana, meaning even as a five-year-old child, I was exposed. Marijuana is a- marijuana is a drug, and there's no way around that fact. The stronger issues we face with marijuana is being combined with illegal drugs. A year, about a year ago, I was walking downtown on a warm sunny day in the summer with my best friend. My best friend, being the dog lover she is, she saw a yellow lab in the shop and immediately freaked out and ran to pet him. I followed her in the shop as she was petting the dog. I was curious, and I looked around, and I saw a marijuana leaf on a flag. I figured it was just a decoration for a shop, until I smelt the thick rubber- the thick rubbly smell- rubby- robbery-smelling substance. The next year passed, and it had a marijuana-related name on the building. And I'm sure the owner didn't notice and didn't have bad intentions for it, but in mind, considering there's people who are out there who will do anything, even to sell to teens just for the business sake. I still can't believe the fact that I was just able to walk in with no question and no one asking for ID. The fact that the access to marijuana is so easy for teens now, it's very scary. Our minds aren't fully developed until mid-twenty's, meaning the effects of marijuana on teens are twice as threatening. There's no way around marijuana being legalized, but I personally don't have a problem, until it starts affecting teens, people, increasing violence, and it being exposed to all the youth. There is already an issue about being- it being contained, so before we start planning more businesses that sell marijuana, the issue is that this needs to be- the containment of this problem needs to be solved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, Ty Retkey.
Hello, Ty Retkey, manager of the PATH Homeless Shelter at six twenty-eight Park Avenue. I saw in the newspaper that you guys had the Alaska Homeless Management Information System, some discussion about that on your agenda tonight, and I thought I'd give you guys an update. The PATH Shelter currently is entering data into the system as of the end of November. I personally am the one doing the data entry for that. I found the system to be a little outdated. It's an online, web-based system. Looks like it was designed in about two thousand and two, but overall, the system is fairly easy to use, I've found. Being someone that is pretty good with computers and the internet and whatnot, I haven't had any issues with it. I'm currently entering backlog data for this, for the year two thousand seventeen. I'm about halfway through all my client list with that. One thing that is nice about this system is it lets us, the questions that we ask now that we are required to ask to fill in all the data points, what I've been finding is we, there's always been kind of a misconception. People feel that homeless people that we're getting in Ketchikan are coming from outside the community and then staying here and whatnot. The state of Alaska claims that that number is less than twenty percent generally. I've found, in our data so far, I've found about thirty percent. It might be as high as forty percent, so I think Ketchikan is seeing a little bit higher number than the rest of the state. The nice thing with this system is it's letting us catch, capture that data and really be able to define that particular problem. I did want to make myself available to any questions that any of you guys might have about the system.
Any questions for Ty? No? I think we're good. Hey, thanks for coming. Renee?
Good evening. Renee Schofield, Pennock Island. I'm going to speak on two topics, and I'll be brief. First, I want to speak on marijuana ordinance one seven dash one eight six three. It's no secret, you guys all know where I'm going to stand on it, and I am all, I'm very much in support of limiting to two shops and agree with this ordinance. Part of it just comes from, we don't have to grow so quickly. We can always add more later, but if you have several, it's hard to pull back when you think you've got too much. So this is the right way to do it. I'll agree with Kari on her statement of the blatant disregard for the law against public consumption. I see it every day, multiple times. In fact, last week, I am out at Thomas Basin on my way home, there were two gentlemen walking past me, smoking their joints. Each of them had one, and they were coughing and coughing, and to the point that they were vomiting on the dock. So being the concerned citizen that I am, I inquired, "Do you need an ambulance?" And they said, "Oh, no, no, we don't, we don't." I said, "Well, maybe the police department, they could, they could help you." "No, no, don't call the police department," and they left immediately. So I'll use that tactic again. So, but with that being said, there are multiple exchanges in the black market happening on our streets. Ed walks to work every day, many of you see him going back and forth. Every single day, every single day, he sees at least one exchange happening. Now, maybe they're just trading baseball cards, I don't know, but there's money being exchanged for product on our streets every single day, and that's at seven thirty in the morning. So that's why I'll support this limit and keeping it to a small roar, if we can. And just to point out some statistics, Colorado, seventy percent of their municipalities are pulling back from what they had gone with in the beginning. Pueblo, for instance, even their healthcare providers, three of their hospitals are saying, "You guys got to slow this down. All of our babies are coming in with, being born addicted to marijuana, and all of our ER visits are related to that." So that, when your healthcare people start standing up, because usually they kind of ride the middle of the road, but when they come out publicly, three hospitals saying, "We got to pull back on this because we got too much. We need to really think long and hard about what we're doing and how we're moving forward. Slow and steady, let's look at it and analyze it every year and go from there." The second thing I want to bring up is the healthcare transparency, the piece of that that the chamber has brought forward. First, I want to say that I want, I want people to remember that these healthcare providers are our people, most of them live here, they're good providers. So as we get into the discussion and people get rowdy about the billing process and, and how much things cost, I just want us to remember that these are our families, our workers, our nurses, our doctors, they're people too. So I want us to be respectful of that as we make public comment regarding those things. But I do support this transparency thing. I think it's important, for instance, you know, when you go to build a house, you kind of know what the lumber's going to cost, and there's going to be variances, right? Same thing in healthcare, you know, there will be some variances, but if we can just get some numbers on the table with these providers and actually get people understanding how it works, how it should work, and why it should work, I think that that's better for all of us, the hospital, the providers, and for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Renee. Any questions for Renee? Thank you very much. Hey, Jason. All right. Come on.
Thank you, mayor and council members. My name is Jason Custer. I live at twelve sixty Millar Street in the city of Ketchikan, and I work as the Business Development Director for Alaska Power and Telephone Company. I serve on the Board of the Ketchikan Chamber of Commerce and am past president. I also serve on the Alaska State Chamber and am a board member and member of various other industry and trade organizations in the state. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ketchikan Chamber of Commerce, which is comprised of two hundred and eighty members, apparently Santa as well, mostly businesses. Our membership and their employees consume an enormous amount of healthcare services within Ketchikan. Ketchikan's business community, as represented by the chamber, supports having a healthcare transparency ordinance which is substantially similar to the one for Anchorage. We asked the city of Ketchikan to take action to adopt an ordinance of this type. The Ketchikan Chamber Board of Directors voted unanimously in favor of adoption of an ordinance like Anchorage's, including a yes vote, vote from the board member from Peace Health, because our community deserves a standardized predictable process for obtaining and understanding healthcare costs. We've shared our opinion with you via a letter to the city council and an editorial in the Ketchikan Daily News, and that opinion has not changed. The Anchorage ordinance is working very well, and legitimate healthcare providers, both big and small, are not having any problem following the requirements. An ordinance patterned after the Anchorage ordinance would apply to all service providers, not just Peace Health. There have been a variety of billing and cost transparency issues with other providers in Ketchikan. My wife and I have experienced serious problems from three providers in the city, which could have been avoided entirely by an ordinance mirroring the Anchorage ordinance. An ordinance would also apply to any future providers who might start doing business in Ketchikan. And Peace Health employees and their family members have expressed to us, the chamber, that they support the ordinance, a number of them. Businesses, chambers, and individuals across the U.S. are beginning to push for similar healthcare transparency ordinances in their communities. Having one in Ketchikan will be a positive and progressive attribute of our community that we can use to help attract new businesses and professionals and retain them. It would send a message that our community cares about making sure that the people who live and work here are treated fairly by healthcare providers and that they understand what they're going to be paying for. It's great that some providers may want to voluntarily improve their practices. If you improve your practices and they're good, it won't be hard at all to comply with an ordinance patterned after the Anchorage ordinance, and there's really no need to debate or challenge it. Challenging or debating a healthcare transparency ordinance would be a sign that clearly there's a problem and there's a disconnect between the service providers and the residents who receive and pay for the services. It's important that our community has a level playing field for all businesses and consumers. The city council shouldn't have to pick and choose between which providers get to be transparent and which do not, and how transparent the different providers need to be. As city council members, you're elected by members of this community, the healthcare consumers, to manage our community in a manner which is totally transparent and which treats everybody the same, putting community interests above special interests. Therefore, I urge you on behalf of the chamber to please take the action requested by the chamber, which is to adopt the transparency, healthcare transparency ordinance substantially mirroring that of Anchorage.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Chelsea?
Hello, my name is Chelsea Goucher. I live at four three six Main Street, apartment forty-nine, and I am here today as the president of the Board of Directors of the Ketchikan Chamber of Commerce, and also, I wanted to let you know that I am a member of the Peace Health Foundation Board of Directors as well. I think they're both important organizations in this community that are extremely focused on improving the quality of life for everyone that lives here. So kind of with that prefacing my comments, I just kind of want to reiterate what Jason said and what Renee said in regard to healthcare transparency. I think that this is a no-brainer. I cannot think of any other industry where a cost or at least an estimate cannot be acquired upon request. I think it's fairly reasonable. I think the Anchorage ordinance is a great place to start. I do understand that, you know, a one-size-fits-all approach for different communities isn't necessarily going to work, but I seriously encourage you to consider that and take a look at it. And I think one of the things that's really important is that such an ordinance is something that's going to protect us in the future. I really appreciate that the healthcare providers in this community are already taking steps in this direction. After we sent the letter to the Daily News, I got several calls from providers associated with different organizations, and we had really great conversations. I also spoke with several of you, and I think that everyone is really kind of on the same page and are moving in the same direction. So I thank you for facilitating that conversation and getting us all here. I think an ordinance would be a next best step because it would also provide a level playing field for any future providers, future doctors, private practice, anything like that that do decide to come into town and weren't part of this conversation, at least there's kind of a groundwork for, for any new providers that do come into town, and that's an important point, I believe. I was asked, actually, in an interview for a radio station out in Juneau, you know, "Why would the Chamber of Commerce support this?" Typically, we, you know, are against both regulation of industry, and, you know, I mean, it's, it's a common sense thing. Yeah, I do think many industries are already overregulated. I think a lot of people that are involved in the chamber world, whether locally or at the state level or the national level, might think the same thing, but sometimes it is important for government to step in and just kind of give that extra little nudge, especially if it's in regard to something that's kind of muddying the waters. And I feel, as someone who has lived in this community almost my entire life, has been involved in the chamber in a couple different capacities over the last several years, and then am now really learning about the healthcare industry on the foundation board, I think that this is something that an ordinance like this will just kind of force everyone to clear the air and focus on what the real issues are. So I encourage you to take a look at that, and I'm open to any questions you might have.
Any questions for Chelsea? Chelsea, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark?
Your honor, council members, Mark Woodward, one zero two seven Millar Street, here for E and M Holdings LLC, and I want to specifically discuss ordinance one seven dash one eight six three about limiting the cannabis facilities. Basically, what I want to do is talk about Ketchikan numbers, you know, because a lot of people will bring in ideas about Colorado or Washington, but let's talk about here. Let's talk about numbers from here. When you break this down, this is a business just like anybody else, okay? There's a supply and there's a demand, simple economics. So let's talk about the demand. I'm going to tell you some numbers just to show you what the demand is. I remember when we started this discussion about the five percent excise tax, you guys had a study done, and the person who did the study said that the city would be lucky to, to make forty thousand dollars maximum in a year, and just my store is going to produce over fifty thousand dollars. That means we've done gross sales of over a million dollars since April tenth, and so there's a demand. There's a, there's, there's a demand here, and again, that goes back to that two thousand and fourteen vote. You know, your constituents here in the city want this industry. They do. And if you look at the votes that happened this past fall in Kenai and in Fairbanks, it's, it's the same thing. And so the demand is there. So then, let's talk about the supply. Right now, there is, there's no edibles manufacturer on the island at all, and we were told in October by the retailers, or by the edible manufacturers that we, we worked with, that we were the state's number one edibles retailer seller in the state. And if you put in this, this ordinance, and again, we're talking not about a ban just here in the area here downtown, you're talking about all the way out by Walmart. And, and that Walmart area up above Rex Allen Drive, it has some of the most, biggest areas that are zoned for this industry, and if you vote yes to this, you shut all of that off. So remember that. And, and what I want to talk about next is, is again, that supply. So what if we had a supplier here? Well, I've had two negotiations already with a group that's willing to and wanting to make an edibles manufacturing facility within city limits. And I'd like to also point out that they're women, and if you look at the edibles manufacturers in the state, they're all owned and operated by women, okay? And so if you guys put this ordinance in, you're making it difficult for an industry that really, if you look at it, allows women to be not just employees, but owners of businesses. And, and if you want to meet this person, I'm not making this up, we've had several discussions. So if you put this ordinance in, you make it twice as hard for them to find a facility that's zoned and able to be, to be ready to go. And again, if you say yes to this, you're saying, I guess it's okay that we'll have some buildings here within city limits that will be run down with no businesses in them whatsoever. You know, I guess that's, that's the alternative. Continuing, I think there's an alternative here. Couldn't you have an ordinance to do what Eric and I did initially? Before we went and got our application, we went to the borough planning, and we said, "How should we go about this the right way?" And, and Mr. Lappin, I believe is his name, said, "You guys need to get approval from the city first before you proceed, before you spend any money, because it'd be a waste if you didn't do that." And so Eric and I, if you guys remember, we did that, and we got your guys' approval before we continued, and I'm pretty sure we're the only business that's done that. So why don't you make an ordinance that says that before anybody applies within city limits, they have to go through you guys first? I think that's, that's, that's an alternative. Then, if you guys don't like the area, shut it down. You know, I, it's crazy. Here I am, as a business owner, getting ready to, to use the tax cut that our president created, and, and he says, "Look, I want you guys to reinvest, we're ready to reinvest that money, and if you guys do this, you make it harder for us. If we don't have, we can, we can contain here on the island. If we have edibles and, and the grows, we can self-contain here. All that money stays here. Prices can go down." So like I said, there, there is an alternative to this, and really, that's, that's all I have to say. I have a ton, but I know we have a long meeting tonight, so.
Any questions for Mark? Thanks, Mark. Yep. That brings us to, I think it's MJ Kittle?
MJ Kittle, two one nine one South Tongus, I'm not a city resident. I was hoping to speak after Catherine, but I'm here to speak on the same thing Catherine is here for, I believe, and that is the recent tragedy in front of Tatsutas. Excuse me. Always upsetting because I happen to drive up right after. So forgive me a second. Anyway, I felt compelled to speak because this is something that's actually been bothering me for several years now, and the problem seems to, problems seem to be getting worse. And that, two issues. One is cars and trucks driving without headlights. I have fog lights. It's snowing, it's rainy, it's gray, it's dark, it's after dark, but I can see. I don't think about the fact that other people cannot see me as well without headlights. It is much harder to discern the speed and the direction, et cetera, of little yellow lights, especially if one might be out. And I see more and more vehicles driving with just fog lights. Last night alone, two vehicles, after dark, about the time they get home, eight o'clock, no headlights, both of them. Fog lights, they've probably been driving that way all day, and they forget to turn headlights on. And in the borough, I'd say more than fifty percent of the vehicles, despite the law, drive with only fog lights, if any. The other one, sorry, lost my train of thought there. The other one is that I think people need to take more responsibility also for their own safety when walking around streets. Another issue that I see so often, and again, last night, two people, they come, once they are committed to crossing the street, whether in a crosswalk or not, they no longer look left or right. They go. They are not looking to see if a car has the ability to stop because of snow or ice, or whether or not a vehicle can see them, or maybe that they're in the far lane and this, so the people aren't noticing them, they're turning. They are committed to going. They're wearing dark clothes, the weather's bad, they have hoodies on, they can't see anything. Now, I don't think we can legislate this, that's not what I'm asking for. I think what we need is a Keep Washington Green ad campaign. I grew up in Washington, and I remember all the hullabaloo. We cannot legislate. We cannot legislate keeping people from littering. It's their right to do what they want. We can't do this, it won't work. And they came up with a Keep Washington Green campaign, and it was amazing, the difference in the litter along the roads after that campaign, before they even started penalizing people. They really think that we need an ad campaign to educate our people that headlights are not just for you, they're for others to see you. And if you want to be safe in crosswalks and along the sides of roads, you need to be an active participant in your own safety. I'm raising a child now. I teach her all the time, you will look both ways the entire time you cross that road. It's a gray day, it's a gray car, you may not see them. If you do finally see them, you can at least run, dodge, whatever it takes. But many times I have stepped out and gone, whoa, I did not see that car, or pulled out and gone, wow, that car's here a lot faster than I thought, because there are no headlights and it's raining. So if people are paying attention, they can be much more active participants in their own safety. And I think both the borough and the city would be wise to put some money out and maybe work with some of the chamber and some of the other groups around here and do an ad cam, campaign on both of those issues. So anyway, that was it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, MJ. Catherine?
My name is Catherine Tatsuda. I am the COO of Tatsuda's IGA at 633 Stedman Street. And I am here also to talk about the tragedy that happened on Monday night. One of our customers and our dear friends was hit by a car and killed while he was crossing the street in the crosswalk from the water side of Stedman Street over to Tatsuda's. And it was dark, and it was dark. And I watched the video, and you couldn't see him, and the car hit him, and it was horrible, just plain horrible. This is the third person that has been struck by a car in front of my establishment in three years. Something has to be done. And I had the opportunity to talk with Mayor Williams and Councilmember Severson about it, and I understand that so much of the responsibility falls on the state, that it's their responsibility for where the crosswalks are and the maintenance of the roads and where the lighting is and things like that. And I get that, but there has to be something that we can do here locally immediately to help keep our citizens and our friends and our customers and our acquaintances safe. When I spoke with Bob earlier today, he talked about how the DET, they're hoping to be able to get lit crosswalks down by Tatsuda's, they're hoping to be able to do something down by AMP across from Vigor, because so many of those gentlemen cross the street at lunchtime, and they, and it's just, it's very dangerous for everybody. But I know that takes time, that takes money, that takes approval from the state. And so I'm asking, I'm here asking for you guys, and we'll go and approach the Borough Assembly and other organizations, to really think about, what can we do today? What could we implement today, or tomorrow, or next week to, to make people be aware? I love MJ's idea, that was exactly what I was going to talk about, is we need to have, it would be wonderful to have a public awareness campaign, something that runs on the radio. I would be happy to voice some PSAs that run, I'd be happy to go into schools and talk to children, and really tell them, say, one of my friends was struck and killed by cars they were crossing the street. If we talk about it, if we be the examples of safety, if we start shaking our hands and talking about it and getting people's attention, then they'll pay attention, and slowly but surely, we'll all develop this culture of safety within our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Robyn.
Catherine, sorry.
Oh, excuse me. George?
George Tipton, 2311 Sixth Avenue in the city. I'm handing out to you a CHAR annual report, you can look at it later. I'm a member of the State CHAR Board, past president, past chairman of the board, and the current vice president on Ketchikan CHAR. What this relates to is our motto is strength through unity. For one of the largest employers in the state, when you look at the whole hospitality industry, you'll see all the diversity that happens in that annual report. Ketchikan CHAR is one of eight affiliates that compromises 85% of the state's population. So we touch just about every sector imaginable. Alaska has the highest compliance rate of any state in the nation for not serving underage people in their establishments. That's an accomplishment, and that comes about through, through our own TAP training program. TAP is Training for Alcohol Professionals. We instituted that on behalf, in 1984, as a state to create regulations to put that in place, and that's still there today, and this is proof of how well it works. We also have serve-safe and food worker protection programs geared towards food hammers to help with the restaurants and anybody in grocery stores and that type of things that handles the food. Ketchikan CHAR, one of the local affiliates, has given back greatly to the community over many years. Just in the last three years alone, we've given two 12-passenger vans to the activities of the high school for their teams, as well as traveling teams to utilize. We've given tens of thousands of dollars back to the community via many nonprofit groups, these same high school activities, junior highs, elementary schools, people in need, whatever have you. We get applications, we take, take a look at them, we get input from the membership, and then the board makes decisions. We also have other fundraisers that go on with wine tasting, beer tasting, the salmon derby, which this last year approached $100,000 in prizes. And pull tab operations. Through these, we contribute scholarships to K High graduates. Alaska CHAR does the same thing on a statewide basis, and these scholarship amounts are in staggering numbers. We just had a person that graduated from UAA that four years ago was given the first-ever four-year scholarship where they got equal amounts over four years, and they graduated in hotel management and restaurant management, hospitality industry. So you see, it does work. We're affiliated with many groups, including National Restaurant Association, American Beverage Licensees, Pro Start, which is the high school culinary and hospitality leaders, which we have at K High as well, the Hotel Lodging, Ketchikan Alaska Visitors Association, that's just to name a few. So it's a pretty strong organization. We have our own lobbyist in Juneau, we have had the same person for 30-plus years. At your leisure, I ask you, look over the annual report if anybody has any questions in the future, or if you have issues that come forward. We are a resource pertaining to anything and everything in the hospitality industry. Feel free to use us. We've been there before, no matter what the subject area is in the hospitality industry, I can guarantee it, because I've been there for 20-plus years myself. Appreciate your time and all you did to do, and Merry Christmas.
Thanks, George. Karen?
Good evening. Terrence Robbins, 3710 Hillside Road. I'll be pretty short, I promise. I'm speaking regarding the marijuana ordinance, limiting the number of licenses. We limit liquor licenses for good reasons, and we have strict, strict cup requirements. If you want to get a liquor license for your restaurant, as, as the pizza place found out down there by the airport, he had to get 50% of the signatures of all the voters within one mile of his organization, or his business. Right now, there's no limits on the number of marijuana businesses, and the borough seems to encourage the approval of all cups, regardless of their location. In many cities, in Colorado, there are more marijuana businesses than there are pharmacies, like by far. In Salem, Oregon, there, which just got retail marijuana, there are already more business, marijuana businesses than there are liquor stores. They're just everywhere. I wanted to mention, I don't know if you read in the, the news lately, Frozen Buds is one of the big marijuana manufacturers in Alaska, and they just had their license revoked, $500,000 fine, and you can go online and see all the violations that they did from, you know, not measuring the amount of THC that was going in the product that was sold statewide, sold at the Stone Moose. All of their products have been recalled, and now their doors have been shut. On-site consumption, you name it, they broke every rule pretty much that you could. So just because we could get a marijuana manufacturer, edible manufacturer in Ketchikan, doesn't mean that it's going to be a good business and operated correctly. Mark mentioned the marijuana report that I, that I came up with on potential sales and stuff. There hadn't been a marijuana industry in Alaska, so all I could do for my calculations was use rates for adults 18 and over in Alas, in Ketchikan. There was no way to guess how much the sales would be to tourists, things like that. And the reason that the, the estimate was so low was because the borough was considering a $10 an ounce tax on marijuana bud, not a 5% retail tax on a product which could sell for anything they want. An edible could be $50. So there was no way to calculate what those sales would be. But I, I do stand by the numbers that I presented, using the criteria I was given. You know, the marijuana businesses, any new ones, you don't know who's going to own it, you don't know how upstanding they will be. I like Mark and, and Eric and stuff like that. And, you know, I heard them say how they were kind of going to be hidden back by the creek, right? Hidden away, not going to be out in front. And that wasn't a very good business model, because they got in trouble this year for having their giant's menu on a chalkboard out on the sidewalk. And now they're advertising on the radio. You know, FCC forbids that, but they don't enforce it, so many businesses throughout states where they've legalized recreational marijuana are advertising on the radio, direct violation. So, and then the other thing is, the edibles, I, I'm not a fan of edibles. Edibles, even if you talk to people who use marijuana all the time, some of them are afraid of them. They're, they're dangerous, you don't know what you're going to get. And, and the marijuana regulations that the state passed, that are voted for, say that you can't sell candy. You can't sell products that kids are going to say, oh, that's a Reese's Peanut Butter Cup. Well, guess what? They're selling them, they were selling them over there, Frozen Buds, Buds makes them. And for some reason, the Marijuana Board in Anchorage is, is approving these candies, candy, caramels, lemon drop-type things, gummy bears, whatever. They don't seem to care, even though their own regulations say it can't look like candy, it can't be candy, it can't be a Rice Krispie treat, but there it is. And their justification, according to the marijuana enforcement guy, is if it's not in a Reese's wrapper that has changed the lettering to not say Reese's, to say something else, that's okay, that's good enough. It can, it can still be a peanut butter cup, but it can't have the Reese's wrapper. So, anyway, that's all I wanted to say on that. I hope you guys, I wish you luck in your decision, it's not an easy one, so, thank you.
Thanks, Terrence. That's the last one that was signed up. Is there anybody else who wants to address the council? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and seated members of the council. My name is Kevin Kristovich, and I live at 419 Boden Street. Unfortunately, I was out of town Monday night when that tragedy happened on Stedman Street. I did kind of know who that person was, and I felt kind of bad about it. Personally, I think there is a need for a stoplight. This town is growing every day. It would, it would just make a lot of sense to put one there. It is a highly congested traffic area, especially in the summertime. You have foot tourists using Deermount Street to go to the park, the Heritage Center, what have you. You have the tourist shuttle vehicles, the buses, the duck trucks coming from the park going down Deermount. There's a lot of traffic there, so a stoplight would be a good idea to look into. I realize it costs money. Maybe we can find out what it's going to cost, if the city has some way to contribute funding to that, that would be great. There is the crosswalk on Tongus Avenue where the old West Side Liquor Stores that used to light up when you hit the button, it doesn't work no more. That is a well-used crosswalk. Need to look into that, find out what is it going to take to fix it. I've spoke with Bob and Chief White about Boden Street. It's a heavily-used street. There's a lot of speeding traffic from early in the morning till night. There used to be a seasonal stop sign there, up at the top where Pine meets Boden. There's a stop sign on Pine going to Boden. They take it down during the winter months, which makes sense because of the road conditions. The pole has been removed recently. What is it going to take to get that put back up? I've seen no posted speed limit signs in residential areas. We need to educate the driving public that there is a speed limit. Going up and down Boden Street, 98% of the people are speeding, late for work, in a hurry to get home, what have you. Same thing on Pine Street. Coming off of Main, going up to Pine, there's a drain there, there's chunks of asphalt missing, people have to swing wide to avoid that. There's been accidents there. I used to live on the corner of Main and Pine. The speed reading sign up off of the bypass, that's on a city street, is that city jurisdiction? Who's responsible for that? Is that a city maintained? What is it going to take to maybe put some more of those around town? Tongus Avenue, around here, you have the three-lane streets by, from the mall going north to the hospital. You have three lanes down by where the accident occurred. Oh, excuse me, no, not on that, but you have people going around people that are stopping to go up Deermount. But these, where there's the inter-track lanes, you have people actually racing to get into the lane that they need to be in. I don't see police pulling people over for speeding. You see them parked, maybe it looks like they're looking for speeders, but I've never seen many police pulling speeders over. So, and another thing that I've talked to Bob and members of the Police Department, both city and state, is these people that are texting while they're driving. I see it all the time, and it's growing about as bad as the opiate problem we're dealing with in this town. And it's very upsetting. There is a penalty schedule that the state of Alaska has, if you guys aren't aware of this. So obviously, there's a state law. What is it going to take for the city to put this into place with an ordinance to enforce it? There are ways to put it into use and ticket people, and in short notice, the message will be sent. I've counted in 10 minutes of walking down the street, 10 people, just that quick. People going to work, just looking at their phone. It just takes a second for someone to, like, what happened the other night? Just, whoa, bang. This has to stop. Something has to be done. If it takes committee work, sign me up, there's six of you at this table, know how to get ahold of me. That's all I have.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to address the council tonight? Come on, Ken.
Good evening, Ken Ariola, 118 Inman Street. I want to voice my opinion and concern about the vehicle traffic accident that took place Monday night. Imagine one of your family members walking across that street at that time of the, of the day, and not being able to see that family member again. Well, Ron is our family member. He's a lifelong resident of Ketchikan. I believe the deputy police chief attributed to Ron that he was kind and easy to talk to. And I would imagine everybody here in this room probably crossed paths with Ron perhaps numerous times, any time of the year. numerous times, any time of the year. So I I hope that the the council will take this matter to heart and work in conjunction with the State of Alaska to address the the lighting conditions on Stedman Street, the six-hundred block. I've noticed that the street light that is on the corner of East Street and Stedman, right by the radio station, right by the community college, it's been out for a long, long time. And, you know, the first couple of incidences where pedestrians have been hit by vehicles, two of them were permanently disabled, not able to work ever again because of those accidents. I vaguely recall another incident of a pedestrian being hit by a car in the crosswalk at the bottom of Deermount. And this was, you know, within that three-year time period where these others have happened. You know, we all understand that the Stedman Street is State of Alaska jurisdiction as far as placing infrastructure, like lights, whatever it takes, I don't know. But if if this council could direct staff to come up with a a plan to work and contact the State of Alaska, the DOT, to come up with a plan to be able to increase the the lighting down on Stedman Street, it's not good. Even on even on a good day, it's not good. So when you add all other elements like ice and snow and rain, it just ramps up the potential for danger incredibly. So thank you for hearing our concerns on this matter. I I I just can only imagine the people in Ketchikan when they saw that article on on page two of Ketchikan Daily News, that we've lost another lifelong resident, a very, very dear man, due to no fault of his own. And as a side note, Ron lived on Inman Street. He's my neighbor. He had an apartment. He started to move out, I think, two days before Monday, uh, would have been Saturday. And he had secured a an apartment out at Saxman, the senior housing development, and he was ecstatic about it. His rent was going to be reasonable. And Monday night, I saw him, he was doing his final cleanup of his apartment. And I don't know what time the accident happened, but I was crushed when I saw his name in the paper. This is a serious matter. And please, please, do whatever you can to work with the State of Alaska for that area downtown. It's it needs it badly. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. We will. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? See it done, we'll move into the agenda. Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, that brings us to incentive agenda. I had a couple of things I wanted to try to add, see if you guys are. I have unfinished business, six A teleconferencing, one second reading, and then three, the appointment. We have one appointment, the parts in Harbor. And then on, let's see, new business, I think it is, I have four, five, and six, and eight. And then on KPU, I have one, two, and three, and four. Anybody has anything they don't want on there, let me know. Otherwise...
We have a motion.
I've moved to consent.
You have a second. Moved in second amendment, can we read items?
Approval of minutes of the special city council meetings of November thirtieth and December fourth and eleventh, two thousand seventeen, and the regular city council meeting of December seventh, two thousand seventeen. The order contract number seventeen forty-two, janitorial service for the Ketchikan Public Library, Raindrop Janitorial Services. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six eighty-five, amending the two thousand seventeen general government operating and capital budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the fire department in the amount of three thousand twenty-five dollars. Liquor license renewals for the asylum, the Alaska Liquor Store, my office, Wine's International and Fat Stan's Lounge. Exempted the procurement of Police Department Annual Records Management System and computer aided dispatch software licensing and maintenance support from competitive bidding and quotation requirements, and that's with Huber and Associates Incorporated. Exempting the procurement of Erickson Operational Support System seventeen A upgrade from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's with Copper Valley Wireless. Ordinance number seventeen eighteen sixty-one, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section two point oh four point zero two three, entitled teleconferencing, second reading. Appointments to boards and commissions, Mayor Williams. Budget transfer, and that's for amendment number one, to contract number seventeen nineteen, upland planning to support expanded marine facilities and larger cruise vessels with Moffett Nickel. Award of contract number seventeen forty-three, two thousand eighteen and to two thousand twenty, twenty twenty, dock vendor program. Various general government departmental budget transfers. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six eighty-seven, honoring Jim and Connie Winger for their service to the community of Ketchikan, and that was brought forward by Councilmember Zingy. Exempting the procurement of programming content for KPU TV from competitive bidding, and that's with Tegna Incorporated. Budgets, budget transfers for various Ketchikan Public Utilities divisions. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six eighty-six, amending the two thousand seventeen Ketchikan Public Utilities Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the electric division in the amount of five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And finally, exempting the procurement of programming content for KPU TV from competitive bidding, and that's with Vision Alaska Two LLC.
Anybody have any questions? Dick?
Yeah, the item that deals with the upland planning with Moffett Nickel, it seems like seventeen or nineteen thousand dollars is quite a bit for one more public meeting. Is there more to it than just coming down and helping a public meeting?
Come on, Steve.
Important Health Director Steve Corporon, there was a spreadsheet that was with that that detailed everything on there. Was there a specific question on any of the line items?
There's a spreadsheet in this.
I I submitted one with my budget, with the the agenda item.
Okay. If if there was a spreadsheet that shows more than just a public meeting, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, there'll be some design work, office work back where they are, travel for several people coming here, including the the primary guy comes from the east, from the east coast.
Yeah, I I know the travel was part of it, but that's for two people showing up down here for two days is, anyway, okay, if there's more than that.
And that's that's one of the one of the line items in that spreadsheet is the travel and that for those guys. But, you know, there's there's design work, there's office work, there's consulting work.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions on anything? Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kuiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to new business, General Government A, number one, presentation of Peace Health of efforts to address billing, our patient billing issues and update other matters of interest. Ketchikan Medical Center. Do we have Ketchikan Medicine in the center? The Peace Health people here.
Well, good evening, and I've met many of you, or all of you here. My name's Ed Friesinger. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer at the Ketchikan Medical Center. And first, I'd like to thank you for hosting us here this evening to give you a brief update on the hospital and talk to you a little bit about some of the billing improvements we've been implementing over the last few months in response to some of the concerns we've heard from you, not only recently but over time. So that's what we're here to do today. So in 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 preparation for this, we've got a few members here from our team. Dale Zender is here. He's our Chief Executive for the Northwest Network for Peace Health, myself, and then Eric Bretner, who is our Chief Financial Officer, will be also joining me in a moment to go over some of the billing improvements that we've made. So what are we here to do? First is, I'm going to go just over a brief overview of what's going on at the hospital, some of our recent performance information. Then we're going to provide some info, follow-up on what we've been doing to address billing, and then have time at the end for questions. So the first thing I want to talk about is, when when we think about how we perform in healthcare, we talk about our experience. What is the the care or the engagement that we have with our caregivers or our employees and our patients? We also then look at our quality, what are the quality indicators about how we're performing, and then our activity in terms of the level of service we're providing the community. We have great engagement with our caregivers. We conduct surveys on a on a regular basis for our employees, and we score very well. We score one of the highest, if not the highest, in the Peace Health system. So we have great employees, our caregivers, who are dedicated to and engaged in caring for our community. We also evaluate how we perform and conduct surveys. We do that in two different ways. One of them is is that we commission patient engagement or satisfaction surveys through a company called Press Ganey, and they evaluate a variety of items. And overall, we have a a high overall patient rating of ninety percent. So we score very well in that area. Also, HCAPS, which is Hospital Compare, which is the Medicare program or the federal program, we score in the four-star area, which again is a very high-performing area. We find that we have high patient ratings in our ambulatory surgery, our emergency services, as well as inpatient. And we also know that there are areas for us to improve on. We have some noise issues. We are a hospital, but we have some noise opportunities to address. We know we know pain management is something that we need to continue to focus on, especially as a part of the opioid issue that's going on in our country. So we're focusing in that area. And then always a continued focus on how are we improving communication with patients and families as we care for them. When we look at our patient safety indicators, again, we look at it and we evaluate ourselves using, looking at national indicators. And some of the the highlights are, we've been well over eight hundred days since the last fall with serious harm, which again is very high performance. Over thirteen hundred days since a central line associated blood stream infection. And we, again, we perform well in many of the areas in terms of the quality of the hospital. So as we get into then our activity, as we look at it, we're seeing a downward trend in the number of admissions, and that is normal. That's what we're seeing in our industry, in in healthcare, because we're seeing more and more patients being treated on an outpatient basis that historically may have been treated on an inpatient basis. So when you look at the line, the line is showing our number of admissions, so that's going down. But you're also seeing an increase in the the block or the graph going up, and that relates to patient days. So we're actually having a longer length of stay with our patients. But what we're also seeing is, we're keeping patients here who are sicker. And so we're seeing longer length of stay, and so that's leading to higher number of patient days. So we're seeing more people stay. We believe locally in the community, and we're seeing longer lengths of stay as associated with their sickness. So we're seeing sicker people, okay? And also surgery. We are seeing our surgical volume grow up and go up in terms of what is we're we're caring for. We did see a dip in two thousand fourteen, our fiscal year two thousand fourteen. We were down a surgeon then. However, with the opening of our new building, we've recruited in a new general surgeon who started actually on the same day I did. And we've been able to increase our general surgery, well as our orthopedic surgery, and we are seeing more activity from our visiting surgeons. So we're seeing really good progress in in all of these these areas. And so before we go on to the the next topic, I just want to say, I've been here for just over five months, and I I need to let you know, I'm very pleased to be a part of this hospital. It's a very high-quality organization that we are providing good, safe care to our community. And it's an honor and privilege to be a part of that. And a part of that is, how are we, again, listening to you, not only as the the council but the members of the community? And how are we using that information to continuously improve what we're doing? And tonight, what we're here to do is talk about what we've heard from the community and what we are doing about it in terms of our billing. And to go over that, Eric is going to come up, and he's going to review the what we've heard again on the billing, and more importantly, what are we doing about it? Okay? Eric.
Good evening. I'm Eric Bretner. I'm the CFO for Peace Health and what we call the Northwest Networks, that's Washington and Alaska. I joined Peace Health just two months prior to it. One of the first things I got to hear about at one of our board meetings and from other people in the community is a lot of dissatisfaction with our billing practices. So, you know, toward that loud and clear, that's something we need to work on. So what we've heard is there's top five top issues around tidiness of billing, how long it takes for us to get a bill out and get a bill to patients, how we interact with patients when we try to collect money, whether we make payment plans available, delays in getting back patients when they've overpaid, when they've paid and their insurance paid, and then we owe the patient money back, and then just kind of a general subject around billing errors. So I'm going to try and cover, talk to you about what we've done in each of those areas, some of the things we're going to be doing in this, kind of in the outset. The work we've been doing and that we're still working on is just a start. We're going to continue to work on this and continue to take this serious, and we've taken it serious in all our communities that's that Peace Health serves in the Northwest. So go through that. So, wrong way, there we go. So some of those improvements we made on getting our bills out in a more timely manner have been, we've automated the posting and payments. And so what that means is, we used to post our payments by hand. We've started doing that through interfaces with our insurance companies. We began that in November, and we should be completed doing that in January of next year, so two thousand eighteen. Sounds kind of like a simple thing, but what that does is it takes the human error out of it. So instead of having somebody post everything by hand, getting the payment on the wrong account, you know, your son, your daughter, your wife, or one of your accounts, and then we have to re-bill it, it just speeds that up if we're getting the payments on the right account. We've also got brought on a new system leader for our revenue cycle for billing. She started in the early part of two thousand seventeen, and she's got a real passion around this. She's been making a lot of improvements. Even before I came, she had started us down a path of making a lot of improvements. And then some of the other things we've done is, one of the biggest, most important pieces is getting the right information from the patient when they come into the hospital or they come into one of our clinics, making sure we have your right address, we write insurance, if your spouse has insurance, that we get that information. So now, we've started in November, is we have a software that we can run your information, make sure we've got all the right address before we send your bill out. So we send the bill to the insurance company, or we send you a notice that you owe amount, or send the right address, or get it to you in a timely manner. And then along those lines, we're also going to be in January, we're anticipating implementing a software that will do it right at the time when the patient gets registered at the hospital or the clinic. So we'll be able to know right then there, you know, if you come and you say, well, Mr. Bretner, what address do you live at? And I give you, you know, it's one, two, three, Main Street, and we type it in, we get your information. Uh, actually, it looks like that was my year-old address? Oh, yeah, you're right. You know, I I I moved, that was, I gave my old one. And so that's really going to help speed up the billing process. Just to kind of give you some information, what's happened in the last about eighteen months is, so in our fiscal year that ends in June, in sixteen, we were at seventy-nine days in the AR, so it's kind of our average time to get a bill collected. We brought that down to sixty-four in fiscal seventeen, so June ended just this past June. So we've made some pretty big improvements already. And part of this is also, is we put in... And part of this is also, is we put a new billing system in. You may have heard a little bit about it in the community. We put a new billing system in in May of '16. So that was another big change we put in. So, kind of wanted to share with the city council tonight, some of those changes we've made, and kind of give you an overview of the billing cycle. So our goal is to get a bill out to your insurance within seven days of when you're when you've seen, either been seen in a hospital and been discharged, gone home, or when you've been seen in one of our clinics. So that's our, that's, we're working on that goal. And then, we're going to work with your insurance. We're going to get, work with them to get your account paid. And then, once we get a payment on your insurance, so they said, you know, this is really the person's deductible, and so you need to, you know, send a pay, this is the patient's responsibility because they're, this is part of their deductible in the new year. We're going to send you two statements. That's going to take 60 days. Then we'll start calling, starting to reach out to you. So, one of the things we've heard was that we were not, we were sending people to collections before they were getting notices. So, in May of '16, we started this new cycle. Hopefully, you've been seeing some of that improvements. But, the point is that we're, you should not be sent to any collections or have any kind of, kind of that next step of collection effort until about 150 days after you've started seeing a statement. And that's, again, after your insurance has told us either here's our payment, or, you know, this is patient's copay deductible, so this is the patient's responsibility. So, really, that should not be happening anymore, and I, we understand it's a big dissatisfier for people here in Ketchikan. And I saw a head nod in the city council. So, I understand that a number of people experience this question.
Now, you put this in place in 2016, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's still happening.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll take that feedback and...
The one I saw was three, 30 days, 30 days after the visit, they got, they had a collections.
Okay.
So, see, that's why.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry that happened, and, like I said, we're...
Or not getting a bill till a year later.
Okay.
That was two years ago.
Two years ago. Okay.
Or not knowing if you got my payment, because you don't get a bill that says paid.
Right. And so that gets back to automating the payment, and, you know, as I gave some other people examples, if we had to say and have a 1% error rate on getting with a count, a payment posted to the right account, either the wrong person, wrong account, that's actually 2 percent.
That means that I have nothing telling me I got, you got my payment. I go to collections, and I have no idea, I can't, I can't resolve it because I can't get you that information. Right? If I send my payment and I don't get anything back saying they got it, and that goes for anyone else here, then there's no way for me to say, "Hey, I sent a payment." Unless I get in my car and drive down there.
Okay. Well, we don't, we don't want that.
Yeah, I don't want that either.
I know. I know. I mean, you don't want, and no business wants the customer to have to go through that. So, we'll continue to work on that. If you want to share anything after, we can talk and take your information, use that as some feedback for our people who do the billing. So I'm sorry that happened.
I just find it interesting that every hospital on this planet that I've been to has been doing this for the last 20 years. They itemize everything down, they send you a bill, then make a payment, they itemize it, they give you that information, they show your payment and everything, and we're still here. I mean, this is great, maybe I'm just cranky, because I got a phone call from somebody from Peace Health who called me Janelle. It's like, only people who call me from one of those call centers in India calls me Janelle. So...
Not anymore.
No, because it's on my answering machine, and I didn't have, couldn't record, so...
All right. Let us, let you finish the presentation. I want to have a question.
So, you know, again, back to the collections. So, some of the things that we've done in just the last few months is, we've redesigned the patient statement. So previous, the new patient statement has the ability for patients to, if they believe they might qualify for payment assistance, then they can do a very short and quick payment assistance application right then and send that back. And then what we're also doing, and we just started this past November, and we're going to be expanding it in the beginning of the new year, is using, it's a service that will look at a patient's and their spending habit, and their address, and their credit score. They don't give us any of that information, they just give us back a score that says, "Mr. Bretner probably would qualify under your payment assistance guidelines for a payment assistance write-off." And so, what both things, things are doing, is instead of the patient kind of having to get that statement and go through a big rigmarole in a time when they're, you know, either recovering from an illness or dealing with some health issues, potentially go through all that, to say, "I think I qualify for payment assistance." We're going to be doing what I would say is more of kind of a poll, and trying to get that information, provide it, and use it to see where we have patients who would qualify for payment assistance, and not be sending people to collections who are, you know, you know, just trying to pay their rent and not having a lot of resources to pay for expensive healthcare bills. So I'd say that's one thing that's new that we've started in the last three months. And then we've reeducated both our local people who help answer billing questions, and also people in Vancouver around, we do have payment options for people. I understand that, you know, with the big emphasis in this community around tourism, fishing, and other kind of seasonal work, that being flexible around our payment plans is something that was frustrating for people. So we've reeducated people that, at our staff, that we do have payment options, we do have a loan program, we do do payment plans. We try to make the payment plans where it's, you know, minimum of $35, so it's not, you know, we don't...
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Because, yeah.
So again, we just, we just reeducated, we just reeducated, so there may have been times that wasn't offered, and so that's one of the things we've been trying to do is make sure people understand that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we have a new revenue cycle leader, Jan Maguire, who joined Peace Health in the beginning of 2017. One of the things she first identified was, we were not getting people back their refunds in a timely manner, and she has fixed that earlier this year.
How would you know you'd have a refund?
And then, on the billing errors and some of the improvements we've made is, again, collecting that upfront information from the patient, validating that it's accurate. We've been auditing our accounts, both for coding and for other issues. We did find a few areas where we needed to do improvements, and we're going to keep working on that. And again, getting those payments automated and making sure that we're getting on the right accounts. So, that kind of covers some of the areas. And again, as I said earlier, we view this as a starting point where we need to make improvements, and we're going to continue to work on that. Don't feel that this journey that we're on at Peace Health on working on our billing and collecting is over. So, if there's no more questions on this piece, I'll, Ed want to talk about the billing transparency issues, and I'll turn that back to Ed.
And just to, you know, follow up or support what we had talked about before, a few weeks ago, when I talked with you here, is Peace Health, we support transparency. We already have a system in place. We reviewed the Anchorage ordinance, and we're in compliance with the ordinance as it's written now. And, and so, we overall, we support it, and we're already in compliance with it. We have it available through a hotline, and we're looking to implement an online system in 2018. We've talked to colleagues who have implemented both the online and the phone. They find that some work better than the other, depends upon the individual in that area. If the city does decide it wishes to pursue an ordinance, what we would encourage is that you bring together the parties who would be impacted, not only the providers, but those who would use it, so that we have an ordinance that is workable. As, as one of the individuals shared during the public comment is, we want something that works for us here in this community, and so we would enjoy being a part of that conversation if, if that is the direction the city wishes to take. And then, follow-up also is, you know, at a previous meeting, we handed out cards and phone numbers, and if you have folks that come to you, you know, the individual who had that 30 days ago, by all means, have them get ahold of us. And I've had, and I've received emails from some members of the city council about questions, and I followed up on them. So by all means, if you have individuals with a question such as that, that you go, "Hmm, something doesn't seem right," by all means, either share that number, and we have additional cards here for you, or by all means, have, either contact me through my email, or let them contact me through the email. I would really encourage that, because if we don't know it, we can't understand it, we can't address it to really see what are the facts behind it. We have...
I gave you your email, so...
Okay. I've not heard anything, so I just want to make sure that you know that from that point of view. So...
Is that your direct email?
It's, it's, let's see, I gotta, I don't want to get it confused with my personal one. It's efriesinger@peacehealth.org. That goes directly into my email. So with that, then, we're open to answering any questions you may have.
Councilmembers, questions?
One of, one of the questions, and I think it was one of the posts on Facebook, with regards to your billing out of the emergency room. And that's not a Peace Health operation, it's a contract service, and they're using NAS.
Yes.
The problem with that, of course, was the fact that we were billing out of network. Are we doing anything to address that?
Yes, we are. Matter of fact, Eric and I were on the phone with them last week, going through and sharing what contracts we have to match them with theirs. We've just received information from them about the volume associated with them, and they're already engaging with some of the contract companies that we have contracts with that we're in network, and they are not. And so they're already working on aligning themselves similar to us in terms of being in network with the different insurance companies.
Judy, then Dave.
So, to that end, do you, is there guidelines for those contractors, like NES? I had a, a recent encounter with those folks, and I was just looking for a detailed statement. That's all I wanted, was, you know, they sent me an amount, 1,100 bucks. I said, "Could you break that down?" They sent me the form that they had sent to my insurance company. So then I called them again, and just for, other people have been complaining to me they can never reach these folks, because I guess at noon, it's 4 o'clock there, so I'm not a morning person, so it took me a little bit longer to reach them. I did finally reach a Mr. Kevin Connor. Mr. Connor was not able to give me a detailed statement, but he did tell me that, per the conversation, he researched the account, and he was going to accept what the insurance paid as payment in full. But that wasn't my, I wanted to know what I was being billed for. I appreciate it, but I would have liked to have known what, you know, what it was. They were billing me as a Level 4. I got a separate bill from the hospital as a Level 3. The gals at the hospital were great, they really tried to help me. Part of it, I think, is I don't understand the system, the different levels. I looked it up, I got descriptions, but it still wasn't clear to me what I was paying for.
So, what I'll do is I'll follow back up with them and understand what they do in terms of providing the detail, and then talk to them about how we might be able to provide a more detailed statement. And also, we look at how are we ensuring we're aligned on those in terms of the levels, et cetera. So I need to do more work on it, so I can't give you the answer tonight.
Oh, and I'm just, they, you know, I understand that, but they said that they, because my insurance company paid the 80%, that they would write off the balance. So, I just wonder, are they going to do that for other folks? I mean, how did they come up with that decision to do that for me? They said they've done it for one other person in the community, and I suspect I know who that is.
And that I can't tell you because I don't know what their criterion is.
I know, but if somebody could just look into that. I mean, I'm not going to make too many waves about it. But if you could check into that.
Yeah. Well, see, our interest would be, is, is that where we can achieve the alignment of the in, in, in-network, that's where we want to be.
Right. And I think that's what it was.
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah. We had a family member use the emergency room several months ago, and I understand about the contracting out, understand that it's, it's not like the old days where here's your bill. The problem is, is four and five and six months later, we're still getting bills. And we have no idea who it's from, it's just a bill. And we have, and we're kind of guessing it's the emergency room, we don't know for sure. We don't know what it's for, we just know we're being, and actually, a couple of those were told, "This is going to collections," it's like this is the first one we've seen. So I guess, what, and I've heard other people express this too, is there a way, in terms of transparency, for at least the people who use the emergency room to have a sense of, "Okay, you are probably going to receive bills in the future from these providers." So that way we can go, "Oh, that's what this was." Now, it's just, it's just a bill, and we have no idea what it was, or who it was for, or whatever. So that, that, that's frustrating.
That's a great idea. And we, we have opportunities to continue and improve as we hear that, and I'll go back and we'll look at, how can we provide that level of disclosure when folks are discharged? The other is, I'd request that, if we could, that we sit down and go through all those bills you just received to understand why it doesn't say who sent the bill. I mean, if it's coming from nobody, if there's no label as to who the company is or, or anything like that, then we have some other issues we need to work on. But it gives us the hard data to say, "Okay, now, rather than I'm imagining what you're saying, I can use your real information." So I'd enjoy being able to do that. Okay?
Okay. Janelle, and then Dave.
All right. There are two names I don't like. Janelle and Janelle.
I won't say these.
So, apparently, I guess, this is my pet peeve. So apparently, three months ago, we played phone deck, and someone called me yesterday about some of my issues, which would have been three or four months ago, and they called me Janelle. And it was from your office, and so I'm just a little perturbed that I can't get a direct phone call back from you, and I feel like we're in a little boys' club here. And it, so I'm just a little testy.
Well, Jan, uh, Janelle...
I don't know why I got a phone call from somebody calling me Janelle.
Well, number one, Janelle, you, you and I have returned phone calls to each other. I mean, I've called you back and I've left messages with you, and, and...
I've not gotten any messages from you. Yeah.
Okay. I'm not lying to you.
I got one. I got one.
I'm not lying to you, Janelle.
And I called you back to the direct line.
So, so I apologize for that. And I apologize that somebody did not pronounce your name properly, because, you know, in that. I'm not sure how I can help with our past performance. All I'm saying is, we're working to try and get better. That is our objective, continually listen and get better. That's our objective.
Dick?
Yeah, I, this may be a simple-minded question, but it seems to me with the computers and stuff we've got going these days, that when a patient walks out of that hospital, that 99% of the time, they should be able to walk out with an itemized billing. And that way, I can take that and compare it to what my insurance company sends me and says, "Here's what we paid." I know what got paid. But personally, I've never, I don't see anything until I see my insurance bill saying, "Here's what we did." And I know that there may be times when you may not be able to do it, but I would think it would be limited, because if it's a general office call, they're going to give you shots, going to take your blood pressure, that ought to be simple. If you're going into surgery, you probably got plenty of time to get it done, because I know they're keeping track of everything that walks into that surgery room that you take, you use. Somebody's putting it down. And today, I would suspect, instead of that's going on a piece of paper, it's going on an iPad, and it's automatically there. But maybe I'm, like I say, not up to speed with...
There is a delay between the service and the coding occurs, et cetera, because in many instances, what, what is occurring is the documentation is being put into the record, and then the record's being reviewed by coders, who are then translating the care that's been delivered to the codes, that are then used through the billing. There are over 10,000 codes that we use for billing, and so, many times, that is, that's where the delay comes in. That's why when, when, when Eric was showing the timeline, you know, between the date of discharge or the date of service, to when we bill the insurance company is seven days, our objective is, is to take the information that's in the record from the provider, being the physician, and then coding it so that then we can submit that to the insurance company.
You have too many codes.
Okay, Janelle, then Mark. Okay, Janelle, then Mark.
The, uh, the, yeah, um, in all those surgeries I've had, um, in two thousand twelve, I had a surgery in Anchorage, and the doctor gave me an itemized list of everything that he was gonna be doing, what it was gonna cost me, if there was no complications, what my out-of-pocket was, and what my insurance covered. And it also gave me a list of the companies, if there was any other groups, like the guy who rented me the compression sock for my, um, my knee bender, so that I knew where I would be getting a bill from other organizations that were outside of his office. Harborview does the same thing. The hospital in Saldana does the same thing. I get an itemized, when my husband ended up in the hospital, I got an itemized breakdown of everything that happened to him, what he had done, what I paid. I get, still get a bill. Five years later, I pay a certain amount every month, I'm not told how much I have to pay, but I pay a certain amount, I'm almost done next month. Here, it's, you have to pay this, and we will not accept anything less than a hundred dollars. I got that two weeks ago. Even though I lost my job, my husband's the only one working, and they told me, I'm, they told him, that they wouldn't accept anything less than a hundred dollars. And I said I could pay seventy-five. So, yeah, that's my other corruption, so.
Mark?
Hey, thanks for coming tonight. So you talk about the Press Ganey scores, as it relates to patient care noise levels, some of the criteria you listed. Does, does such a survey exist for this issue? You're working to try and get better, and I really appreciate that, and I know it's not an overnight fix. Can you quantify it? Can you come back to us in ninety days, or six months, and say, billing errors have gone from, or billing issues, whatever you wanna call it, has gone from, you know, X percent down to Z? Is there just cold, hard, unemotional data you can furnish on that?
I gotta look at Eric for a second.
So there's more about, you know, upfront, you know, what was provided upfront, was information explaining probably not the building errors that you're looking at. We're gonna be building some of those tools that you want, as we, over the next year or so. Unfortunately, when we implemented a new system, it wasn't built, and so we're having to build it.
So what I'm asking for is something you folks think you can achieve? Because if you can't quantify your improvements, how do you know you're getting there?
Right, right, which is one of the things that I, as I promised to our board, as we're figuring this, unfortunately, to build it the right way, we're gonna have, it's gonna be one of our next major upgrades to our system. Which is, right now, slated for October eighteen, it's much further out than I want. We're gonna be working to see if we can do something to interim. That is one of my goals, is to have more concrete information to share. What we are tracking is number customer service calls, I don't have those figures off the top of my head. Ed talks with the local people who take the customer service calls, and the quantity has gone down, but I can't quote a figure right now.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that you folks are, are working on it, because this sort of transparency really goes hand in hand with the pricing transparency. When people come and speak to us as council members, it's all anecdotal. I talked to a guy, Judy talked to a person, Janelle talked to three people, but we have no way to have an aggregate quantification of what's really going on in our town. We know there's issues, you folks are here to address it, and we appreciate that, but if, if that's a tool that can come to be, that would be, I think, very useful, obviously for you folks, but for the citizens in Ketchikan.
Yeah, our, our local team members right now are keeping a, um, a manual log of the calls and, um, issues they're working through. And, and they are seeing a decrease in the number of personal encounters, not only in the office, but the calls they're receiving.
Okay, thank you.
Dick?
Yeah, one more, relating to, I think, what Mark's question was about, well, maybe, you, you showed up there that, you give surveys out to the patients every now and then, and it says, how's my service? And it's, you had about four or five items. I didn't see anything on there that dealt with billings after I'm done, to where people can, can say, hey, it was great, it was not so great, and feed, give you feedback on that. That would be an easy one, because then you're just gonna get plain old feedback. Mark was asking for specific, I think, quantitative scores, but this other one's just, it's my feedback, hey, I like what happened. Or you get three stars or five stars, I don't know.
Yeah, right now, we don't have a system that does that, so. It's a great, I mean, it doesn't mean we shouldn't be doing it, it means right now, we don't have a system that does that.
Okay. Bob?
Again, thank you guys for coming forward. I, I think that there's still a lot of work to be done. I had submitted some questions, I think they're more complicated than what could be answered in the short period of time we have here tonight. And also, I'm very pleased to see the board here, supporting, supporting you there. Great people that are very responsible within the community, and I'm just hoping that they get enough information out of Peace Health to, to do the job they need to do, in regards to, um, you know, watching out for our committee and supporting it, and helping with the planning in the future, where we're gonna go with a lot of this stuff, and, and maybe help you through some of the, uh, public outreach stuff. As a city, we probably still have some discussions we have to have in regards to responsibilities within the lease, I think we said you said stuff on that, that's where, kind of a different thing. When I first met you, was your first day on the job. And I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the response I've got, talking to you about all these issues, but I still think there needs to be, um, a public forum. This, this is probably not set up the best for the general public who has questions, because there's a lot of them out there. And I think as, as the transparency issue continues down the road, I think, one of the more difficult issues is dealing with a patient that understands his bill. And so I, I hope we're up, we're up for the task, so. But again, I like to say, I appreciate you coming here, but I think there's, there's still a lot of issues that we have to discuss. Thank you.
And, and we recognize that, and that's why today, our, our plan was to provide you with an update, uh, you know, again, to number one, let you know we heard what you said. And number two, to show that we are moving things in the right direction, we have a ways to go. There's no question, we have a ways to go. Our plan is to come here on a, a regular basis, to provide you with updates about how we're progressing here. We've had discussions on, uh, you know, as a transparency conversation continues to mature, to have that. But our plan is to come here and provide you with updates, um, on, on a regular basis. Carl is now on our boards, and he has full access to board meetings, and our executive council, our committee meeting, so he's a part of that. And, and, and your point, we provide, uh, regular updates on this topic with our board on a regular basis. Because, you know, we're double-checking that, you know, are we hitting on the right topics? And are we moving things in the right direction? But we do have opportunities for improvement. How do we develop a survey on billing? That's a great question. How do we set up a program with our emergency room, so that when a patient is discharged, saying, here are the three, or the two entities you would expect to see a bill from, uh, from, from that perspective? When a patient is discharged, here's the timeline that you might, that you would anticipate a billing system would work, so that they walk out with that information as a part of the discharge process. Again, we have a ways to go, but we've been making progress. And that's what I hope you're hearing, too, is that, um, we've listened, and we are making progress.
Janelle, you got something?
Yeah, um, there's a group on Facebook, Bring Dialysis Home. You, you guys might wanna get on Facebook. There's people that, um, it would've been nice if they showed up or wrote letters, but, and I don't know if you've gotten any of the letters, if they've sent you letters regarding dialysis.
I've not received letters on dialysis.
Uh, yeah. And I, that frustration is mine, with people saying they're gonna send letters, and they never do, but, but, uh, yeah, it's, um-
And dialysis, that's a, that's a wonderful conversation, it's a very, very complicated conversation. It's a very complicated one.
There's a large group of people that would like to see it here.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank you for coming. Um, I wanna make sure that everybody knows that. The staff out at the HUS was wonderful.
Yeah.
And people do a great job. I guess, the way this has come up with the council, a lot of us on the council, in running into some of the issues, and so it started coming up, but, um, you know, you can't, I mean, those are all people we all know out there, and Ed Love, I have a daughter that works in the emergency rooms. I, um, I can't, ever, I've gone through lately, some stuff at the hospital, and it's been wonderful, so. I'm glad you guys came and you're addressing it, and, um-
And, and again, I really encourage that, you know, if you have questions, you know, get ahold of me. Please, uh, we, we've given you phone numbers, you, you know my email, have them, send it to me. Some days I can get up to a hundred and fifty emails, so it may be a couple of days, but, uh, but please, please, have them get ahold of us, because if we don't know it, we can't depress it, okay?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you all very much.
Who's set up this, is that your setup?
That's ours.
Is that- Do we know how to turn that off, or?
I just call it, it can pop off.
Hammer?
Don't worry about it, you'll, you'll be safe.
It's gonna blast you right in the face, boom.
Okay, that brings us to, um, seven eight two ordinance seventeen eighteen sixty-two, adding a new section thirteen oh nine oh four oh of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Program of Performing Artists, first reading. I think we sunsetted that, um, ordinance for having the people play on the dock there during the summer, so if we're gonna, we have the money and the budget, if we're gonna do that, we gotta have this ordinance redone. Do we have motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council approved amendment number seventeen eighteen sixty-two, adding a new section thirteen point zero nine point zero four zero to the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Program for Performing Artists and Establishment Effectively.
Moved and seconded. Anybody wanna talk about it, Dick?
Yeah, I wanna move the amendment to sunset it again in November two thousand eighteen, like we did last year. We said we were gonna try this once more, one more time, and so I want it sunset.
You guys want a motion, or would that be a friendly amendment?
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, I had the same idea, I think we just add it as a friendly amendment, and, and move forward with that.
Is there any complaints with, uh, just that it's sunsetted? Gage will just add that to the motion. Anybody else have anything else?
I like it.
Call the roll.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry, Nick.
You know I'm gonna just go back to throwing things at you.
Yeah. Throw candy, oh.
No, I know that, I know there were some concerns about it this year, but just keep in mind, this, this, this was not just an unusually bad summer, this was the wettest summer in Ketchikan's history, so, let's give it another shot.
Call the roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yep.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Hey, that passes seven oh, and that brings us seven eight three ordinance seventeen eighteen sixty-three, meaning the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section five, twenty oh one five, entitled limit on number of retail marijuana stores to also limit marijuana cultivation facilities, and prohibit marijuana production, manufacturing facilities, and establish effectiveness.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob?
Um, you know, I think that we've responded to, uh, the fact that the state has legalized, uh, the consumption, recreational use of cannabis. We have two marijuana retail stores in town, there's competition there that, uh, provides for a fair market, I hope, and then, uh, the cultivation, we'll have two of those. This doesn't limit the fact that there can be more cultivation sites within the borough, we're just saying it's city limits. And one of the problems we have within city limits is the size of our lots. We have smaller lots, your neighbors are closer, a lot of them are filled up with, uh, just the houses, and there's just no real way to, to do that, and so, um, also, uh, no fault to the borough or anybody else, the, the whole process has been a little sticky, and I know it's fresh out of the gate, but I think that slowing it down, putting this in place, uh, again, ordinances can be brought back, forwarded, amended, and worked on, but I think this is a prudent thing to do.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna vote no on this, because I think, um, I just think supply and demand will take care of it. I listened carefully to everyone who spoke about it during public comment, and it didn't change my mind. I kinda came here tonight knowing I was gonna vote no, but I did, I was willing to listen to all the comments. One of them was, uh, she urged us to remember the people, uh, when considering the healthcare billing process. Remember, these are people we live with, people we work with, and, and in my opinion, this, the same thing goes for these people who want to create the cultivation, um, the marijuana cultivation facilities. They're people trying to stay here, because they want to stay here, so they're, you know, broadening their horizons, doing something that they think is gonna make a living. And like I said, supply and demand would take care of it, and so I'll be voting no.
Um, Bob, a question on the manufacturing, now, we don't have any manufacturing facilities in here. So did you wanna limit that where there's none, or?
None.
So we're not gonna have a, um, one, two, or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay. Um, anybody else?
You said enough last time, yeah.
I'll vote yes, 'cause I, I've seen what supply and demand did in Portland, and, uh, my sister sold her house out of her neighbor because she was tired of smelling it. And in that area of Beaverton, there is one every other building, and it is not pretty. And I don't particularly wanna go downtown and see the, every other building, and then having to smell it, and I've been smelling it a lot lately. And, um, including one of my storage units, where I will be moving my stuff, um, before it starts to smell like.
Well, my only question is on the manufacturing there, if there's somebody out there in the Walmart area, where we do have, um, you know, spaces for, um, that kind of facility, which is one already up there, or other kind of facilities, I mean, that's a perfect location for, um, that kinda works, so. I hate to limit, um, the, um, availability of somebody being able to open up, um, some other manufacturing industry in this town. It's not downtown, it's not in this air, um, in the areas of, of people. It's, um, pretty well out of the way up there, so, that's my only concern is the manufacturing.
It's above a storage unit that I'll be moving out of.
I have two.
That I have.
Anybody else? Call the roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Yeah, that passes six to one. And that brings us down to seventy-seven, discussion requiring all agencies providing homeless housing or, and their services to participation in Alaska Homeless Management Information System as a condition of receiving future community agency funding. Councilmember Gage.
Um, the reason I bring this up is that the, uh, I think it is, like, as a community, we need to be, um, due diligent in, uh, making sure that, um, we're with the state on-
Hold on, can you do a motion first?
Oh.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Number seven.
Number seven.
Your Honor, I can make a point.
Go ahead.
I move the city council to require all agencies to provide services for the homeless housing and our services that assist individuals to participate in the Alaska Homeless Management Information System as a condition of receiving community agency grant funding.
Sorry. Gage, Janelle, continue.
Uh, so basically, um, with the fiscal problems of the state, um, the, this database will assist the state in, in applying for HUD funding, and, um, in the meeting we had with June, Ketchikan got listed as only having ten homeless people, which is way below what we actually have. The thing with this, um, with the AKH MIS and HUD, it said will also benefit, um, us getting, um, low-income housing for people with seniors, um, affordable housing for people with disabilities, ADA requi, you know, um, that ki, that kinda housing that we really lack, um, for our citizens. Um, and if, Kevin can actually speak to some of that, too, so, if he wants to, I know he's been waiting all night.
I was actually, yeah. Can you pull up? The back isn't working. You want me to come up?
Oh, if you want to.
It's your call. You were doing it privately.
Oh, so the, what I'd like to see, because we, we have, with the fiscal problems, and[1795.41] Oh, so the, what I'd like to see, because we, we have with the fiscal problems and, and it's not that I, I don't wanna support every, um, nonprofit that I want. But with our small pot, it'd be nice to also have that, that funding that they can get. Because of, um, this limitations on, uh, applying for certain grants unless you have that AKH MIS database, um, they wouldn't be able to go after some of the funding for that. But there's, there's community grants that as a whole, we, if we have our numbers. And Ty actually has been putting in his numbers from the past year. Um, those numbers are gonna give us the ability to bring in more HUD funding in our communities, which I think would benefit us, all of us as a whole, let alone the state. And according to the state, we're not even getting a quarter of what we're probably, um, could be getting in, uh, low income, um, and HUD funding from the federal government. And, and mind you, the homeless problem throughout the state is growing. And it's not just the people we see on our streets, it's, it's people that, um, can't afford basic housing. There are seeing an increase in people, and I'm sure we'll see it too, where people that are working, two people, families working, but they're still going to a food bank. And I know that there's been, uh, I've talked to several people locally that they're finding it very hard to pay rent and, um, cover their bills and buy food. So they're also going to the local food bank that I believe is on Friday nights. And I, I recently ran across that information, but I don't know if they're taking the information there either. It's pretty much, um, at the church up on Second Avenue, but they're not, um, they're kinda, it's based on just honesty, so.
Are most groups in support of this or is there a kick?
Yeah, most of them are doing it. I just wanna make sure, like, if, if there's any new ones that come up, that we just, you know, we, we get this, we get this data. Because, um, just in the state this last year, the, the rise in homelessness is like one point nine percent increase.
Well, my thing is that, you know, because this will affect our agencies in January, if we do this, is it going to eliminate any of our agencies that apply now?
I don't think so, 'cause I think they're all getting it.
Dave?
Well, and, and that's the question I have. I, I, I agree, this needs to be done. But I, but my, my question is, I have no idea how broad this is. 'Cause it says, you know, um, let's see, to assist, you know, I, I, I get providing services and all of a sudden to services that assist those individuals. I mean, how broad is this? How, and, and, and while, it's, it's one thing for the homeless shelter folks to have, to have the, have the folks to get on the computers, it may not be the same for all the nonprofits. You know, are we adding a layer of bureaucracy to some group? It's, maybe, maybe homelessness isn't their mission, but they're helping out in some way. And so I guess I, I need to get a better sense of what, how broad this is before I support it. Because I, I support the idea a hundred percent.
Yeah, I just don't want the seniors, Bob and Judy.
I, I agree with it. I think it should be an item that we would take into consideration in regards to receiving the community agency funding. But I, I don't know that I would support this motion, um, requiring all agencies, because some agencies have paid staff. And, and a lot of, some agencies are just volunteer and you're gonna add, uh, a tremendous responsibility. And, and some of them may have a very minor part compared to a larger organization that's providing more services, so. But I think that if we add it as, um, a considerate and, uh, you know, a factor that we're gonna consider during the, the process of, uh, community agent grant funding, uh, I think that would survive the point that we're trying to make.
Judy?
Actually, I was just gonna echo what Bob said, so I'm good.
Anybody else?
So, at this point, I would withdraw my motion if my second one would do it as a re, as a consideration.
I'm confused.
What, if I may?
Go ahead.
What, what I'm saying is, rather than make the requirement at this late date, or, 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 not being that they're not all created equal, in regard to our community agent grant funding, which we're talking about here, it's gonna be one of our, uh, major considerations. In providing, it's one's doing it and one's not, and they're equal, uh, to our benefit, we may do the one that is.
Well, I know that Ty and them are talking about also helping the ones that don't have paid staff. Is that how that?
May I come up?
Please, please.
Come on in. Careful.
For the record, Kevin Gutsy, Ketchikan Wellness Coalition Executive Director. There's been a lot, still a lot of conversation. And please note that I am not speaking in any way on any other agency other than the Wellness Coalition and what we are, um, and how we have been involved cursorily in this process. I believe my conversations with Ty and both, and with FCHS representatives, uh, would indicate that they are both interested in being able to help, uh, provide for some of the agencies that may struggle more. Uh, we've also had conversations generally, uh, Councilmember Gage, sorry. I should've, uh, as you have even offered at times to help enter data for some of the agencies, I have offered that as well. And we'll be glad to, to support each other in that process. The big thing I, I just wanna say is that through all the process that we've been in the past year, uh, since we had our first town hall meetings on this in September and October of last year. The big, the big issue is the data. The data, we've gotta be able to track the data of where people are, what their situation is. Have one person goes to one entity one night and then they go to the, another entity the next day. They need to be able to know where they're receiving services, what the needs are, um, what the challenges are for them that day. And if there's seem, if there's a process, um, that allows for that to occur, that is where we're gonna be our strongest in both serving people who are experiencing challenges, which is the first one, most important thing. Secondly, it will allow us to be able to, um, to be able to access the funding, um, from the federal and state levels. And to be able to draw down more, uh, funding and more programs that will be able to assist Ketchikan. Because right now, we're, we're severely lacking in that area. But what we've heard from the coal, uh, from the state coalition leaders, um, Brian Wilson, who is here, and Alyssa and others, are that if we're not all doing it, then it's not necessarily going to be as effective. And the numbers, um, won't, uh, won't be as reliable and we'll still be missing some of the pieces. The, um, other thing I wanna just go back to, the meetings last year, um, and into the winter. We had, um, a wonderful city employee named Sierra Fourwinds, and she was in our, in your accounting department. She came on her own accord to many of those meetings, as many meetings as she could get off from. She had developed a lot of databases, uh, for specifically brain injury, uh, grants at the federal level. And she had developed these kinds of, of, uh, data systems that track, uh, disparate, um, disparate agencies or agencies that were asking similar questions but not the same and how to be able to bring all of it together. And she was prepared to even build one for us locally. And then when Reverend Everly of FCHS, Ty of PATH, uh, Councilmember Gage and I went to, uh, Juneau, we realized we have this wonderful system. It's already been built for us. It's at the federal level, it's being used in twenty-five, uh, twenty-five states, roughly in the nation. And that allows us to be able to jump ahead at least a year or two, especially considering Ms. Fourwinds unfortunately had to move south, um, and has left employment with the city and, and the city of Ketchikan last month. I met with her two days before she left and she said that she had, uh, was absolutely thinking this was the right way to go. We can go, uh, fast and hard and, um, and I'm not recommending that, because then people feel like they're, and agencies feel like they're being forced into something they may not be ready for yet with their volunteers or with their staff. But we do need to be able to move toward a place as a community where we're all working on this. And hopefully be able to, uh, then find a common vision from the data that's come out.
What about, um, you know, we have a list of people that we give money to, like, the Arts Council, I mean, do they have to do this? Because they don't do any services to them or?
They don't, they don't necessarily do services, right?
How about the seniors then?
No, because it's not, that wouldn't be considered homeless.
It says here assist.
Well...
And so if, 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 for example, one of those groups gave free tickets to homeless people.
Yeah.
Then suddenly they're under, under, under that rubric.
The other...
And that's, that's, I, I guess that's, that's my thought. I just, I, I, I agree with, with doing it, I'm just, I'm just sure.
The other nice thing about that system is it allows, so, finding all the gaps to help people depending on, like, say, their disability, mental, um, reasons why they're homeless, and getting them back on track to getting them in housing. There, a lot of times just see, looking at what they're, what they're getting at the, this point, or one point in their, um, where they're at. And whether or not they're getting, um, mental health services someplace. And then where's the gap? Like, do they need help with, from sale? Or can we get them, um, placed with, you know, 'cause, and we've had several, like, um, a few people through sale have ended up getting, you know, the, it, it's just getting them where they need to be. And a lot of that database can actually help with that.
So right now, we, we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and, and we all know we have more regulatory responsible than we want, and I don't think we need to regulate this. I think that there are other agencies out there that are providing funding that do a better job than that. So again, I, I would withdraw my motion. And if my second approves, that would be fine. If not, kind of...
Mark is the second, sorry. Okay. So, we have no motion on the floor. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I just think that we have four hands that say that is part of the criteria. They can figure out how...
I wanna track it. I wanna get a sense of, and may, may, maybe we'll work with these various groups to refund over the next year and say, look, do you provide? And then, 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 see, they will have an answer. Right now, I haven't got an answer.
Okay, do we have, um, four hands to, uh, make it a criteria on the, um, agency form or whatever we do?
Question first.
Consideration?
I, I tend to agree with four hands, but how are you gonna identify those agencies? So that's the main thing right now. We need to identify which one of those people or groups this would apply to, because we know it's not gonna apply to all of them.
I think they're gonna have to tell us.
So how are we gonna apply it?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, you have a committee in place that reviews each of these grant applications typically in January. I think each of the organizations could be vetted through that process to determine whether or not they're a group that you want to get this data from. And through that vetting process, you're gonna know what their reaction is, and if there's a, uh, exception, then you can come back to the council at the time the, the grants are awarded. And you can make a determination at that point. But I would think that would be the, the easiest place to start closing the gap.
Anybody have a problem with that? All right, shall be said, shall be done. That moves us on.
Socia finis.
So that brings us down to seven B. I have, for some reason, I didn't put five on the consent agenda, so just let me have a motion.
Yeah, I wonder about that.
I think I just thought we might need to...
Oh, God, it's allowing to. Pursuant to section three, this is right, one, three, three twelve zero five, one of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, I move the City Council to approve professional services agreement for setup, conversion and training and annual maintenance of the telecommunications division's Broadworks IP phone switch between the city of Ketchikan, doing business as Ketchikan public utilities, and ECG in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand dollars, eight hundred, sorry, hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Authorize funding from telecommunications division's two thousand and eighteen engineering and architectural professional services account, number six four zero point zero two. And direct the general manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city council.
Moved and seconded. Anybody wanna speak to it? Call or roll?
Zingy?
Yeah.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That takes us back to unfinished business and that's to the budgets. Let's take a quick five minute break.
Okay.
We're on unfinished business, um, six eighty-two, resolution seventeen twenty-six ninety, I mean seventy-nine, updating the budget of two thousand and eighteen for the city. All right, we have some, um, do you think, we have some light on the table? I think number, uh, budget update nineteen is the only one that we need to do a motion. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I'm with the City Council, member twenty-eighteen, General Government, operating capital budget by approving carryover of ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars of uncompleted capital projects programmed for two seventeen to twenty eighteen as outlined in the attached schedule.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anybody have anything they wanna comment on it? All right, call or roll?
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yeah.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. Um, the budget, um, does anybody have anything they wanna add or subtract or do anything last minute before we approve the budget? Do we, the motion's on the table already, it's clear, isn't it? Call or roll?
This is for the General Government.
General Government.
Okay, um, Kuz?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us now down to six A, or six B one, resolution seventeen twenty-six eighty, adopting the budget for the year two thousand and eighteen for Ketchikan Public Utilities. Do we have, we don't have any light on the table for that, do we?
There's no motion.
Oh, then fourth. Does anybody have anything they want to amend or do anything on the KPU budget?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I don't know that I can vote on that, just because they, KPU, they ran space in the mall last time.
Don't worry about it.
Okay. I just wanna hear that again.
All right. Anybody else? The only thing I have on it is, you know, we have that five percent increase in electric. I'd love to see that at two point five and do it over a two-year period. And it's still, with the two point five, am I correct, Carl, we'd still be in the positive on the, um, electric? Because it's gonna bring eighteen eight, I think, in at five percent.
We'll be, we'll be short about two ninety in revenue, based on an April one implementation date.
And then, so with the five percent, that brings us into black, correct? According to writers.
Define, Mr. Mayor...
I'm just talking about electric.
No.
No?
No.
No, we're gonna be...
Remember that? Okay, maybe I read the wrong claim.
You wanna?
I mean, you have a, you have a million dollar deficit in the electric division, and, uh, this rate increase will, um, provide about eight hundred thousand on an annual basis. Uh, this year alone, it's only gonna be about six hundred thousand if we approve the five percent, because the effective date will be April first.
What about the one point four on the SEPA thing? Did that help?
That's all been programmed in.
If you say programmed in, I wonder what that means.
If you look at your summary pages on the expenditures, you look under two thousand and seventeen estimates, that one point four million is listed as a purchase power rebate. So it's been fully accounted for in the expenditures for two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, we still start with eleven million.
You're talking about reserves.
Yes.
Now you're going...
I, I just hate to raise it five percent when we're sitting on eleven million, so.
Mr. Mayor, I know that seems like a, a, a whole lot of money, but if you start apportioning it to each of the operating divisions by their percentage of what they make up out of the total budget, it's, it's not a lot of money for each division. If you were to lose a diesel generator down at Bailey, or we had a major problem at the water filtration plant, you gotta remember that would require emergency action. You can't go out and borrow that. You can't go out and borrow that money because it requires a, a vote of the people. So if you've got to act, you've got resources in your accounts that will allow you to take that kind of action. For the size of the utility that we are, given what we do, it's not a, uh, a large amount of reserves.
I was.
You know, I, I tend to agree with Lou, you know, but I'm, but I'm not going to defend him. But the reason being is, you know, I don't like any one of these three rate increases we put out there. But the reality is this body set there and we approved wage increases for the next three years. It's going to probably cost us across both the general and, and general government and public utilities almost two million dollars by the time it's done because we, and that number we've got does not include retirement we have to pay out. It's just the wages. That's over three years. But these increases aren't even going to cut covering those things there. And one of these days, we're going to, if the public can't, doesn't get on our back or we don't do it right, we're going to be looking at sales taxes. We're going to be looking at property taxes because our costs are, are going up. I'm not going to say they're out of control yet, but we need to figure out a way to watch what we're spending. So I agree with Lou, but I got to say, we've got to leave the damn thing alone.
Bob?
Yeah. The other thing with those reserves, we may start out at eleven, but we're ending this year with eight something. And so with the three divisions, you've probably got four for telephone, three for electric, maybe only a million in reserve for, for water if you broke it down by the percentages. Um, so we're still, we're paying for capital projects with our reserves and that's probably what they should be utilizing. Shouldn't be utilized in the operations, so.
General, General?
I, I just have a question. Um, so how, in the last five years, I'm trying to figure out, so how much has it raised over a period of time? Like, did it just stay at one price for a long?
The council's been really good at keeping it from raising dramatically.
Okay, because what, what if we looked at in the future of, you know, that, like you said, the one percent of, you know, just gradual? Because like when I lived in Kenai, when I first moved there in two thousand and nine, it was forty-five dollars. We got a little card. I can actually bring it in. It's the utilities and sewer and water all on a postcard. It's not in an envelope. It's just how much you paid. And it started out at forty-five dollars, but now it's eighty-nine for my house. So in the five-year period, they've raised it for water, sewer. I mean, I, I get that people can't afford it. I get that. But I also know that cost of living and cost of things are just, they're not going to go down. I mean, unless the bottom falls out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If, if I could just make one point that I made earlier and think of it in the context exactly of what council member who said relative to the three-year contract extensions that you approved with one point six, two percent, and two percent cost of living adjustments. Two thousand and twelve to two thousand and sixteen, the utility as a whole lost six point one million dollars. Just that fact alone, forget about what's in reserves, the fact that we lost six point one million tells you there's something radically wrong with your rate structure. You're, you're not bringing in sufficient revenue to fund expenses. That's the bottom line that we've been trying to, to, to convey to the council in this budget.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else? Very, call or roll. Call or roll.
Cuse?
Okay.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to nothing. That brings us all the way back to other vouchers. Vouchers of Daily News, three thousand. Three thousand sixty dollars and two cents. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move for the approval of vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News, me and Matta. Three thousand sixty dollars and two cents.
Second.
Okay. Bring this to managers' report. Carl has, um, agreed.
Shall I call the roll?
Oh.
No.
I guess I'm worthless after nine o'clock.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Cuse?
Why? Okay.
Sixty-one one.
Okay. That passes seven to nothing. Um, Carl's agreed to, um, have us move his, um, evaluation to January third so we can go home tonight.
Fourth.
Fourth. Sorry. And then, um, managers' report. What do we got, Carl?
We have a report relative to the upcoming FEMA meeting in January. There was some discussion by council members about trying to arrange a meeting with FEMA representatives, possibly with the borough. Apparently the borough does not want to participate in that type of meeting. FEMA has indicated that they would be more than willing to do a, a conference call early in January to go over questions that you might want to pose, uh, at the twenty-fifth, which is the scheduled meeting in January. And they would also be available for a morning meeting on the twenty-fifth in January. If, if council wants to, um, set up those calls, we can arrange it and.
Did we have some concerns? I think Rob had, they were, they were going to take on some other responsibilities or?
Well, I think there's a number of concerns regarding to their mapping and how it's going to change. Uh, who's, or who is required to participate in the flood insurance, uh, rule and who isn't. But there are some other things such as, you know, how we build houses on rock. We build big rock things out on the beach and then we fill them and build on them. You're not going to be able to do that anymore. You're going to have to come up with some other type of system. And there's, I'm sure a bunch of other things in there. Um, there's no, uh, they don't use any historic data to figure out whether we're a risk area or not. We haven't had anybody make a claim on flood insurance and yet they're going to be expanding that. And I'm not too sure that a lot of it is to cover the losses that we're having in, in, uh, the lower forty-eight and the, in the Gulf Coast and, uh, Florida and, and, uh, um, different areas, but I, I think it's worthy of consideration. And if you, if a community, I think Wrangell's opt out. If they opt out, then you're no longer available for federal loans. You can't get Freddie, Penny, HUD, whatever else, so. Yeah.
So what's the best? What's the best time then? Is it the twenty-fifth for both those meetings by those times?
They like to do a conference call early in January, uh, in advance of the meeting of the twenty-fifth. So if people would let me know who's interested in participating.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I'd probably show up. And I, I think some of the things, Bob, we need to write those down so we nail them with those questions. Because we really didn't know why they're showing up. They stunt, jam something down our throat or are they going to listen to us? I mean, that's probably not a legitimate question, but.
We'll set, we'll set up the times and get a notice out to council.
Yeah, we'll sit down.
Anybody who wants to be there, please come. General Lee, do you have something?
Well, when I went to the meeting, the one thing that struck me was they're already making the banks follow the rule. So, yeah, everyone needs to show up because, yeah, it's going to tie a lot of people when it comes to family and all those things. They're not going to be able to, yeah.
If there are four or more council members who want to participate, we'll have to notice the meetings.
Yep. Let's, when you get a time set up, let's see how many people want to show up.
The only other thing I have, Mr. Mayor, is due to, uh, schedule absences, our office will be closed on Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. So we'll be back in business on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions on anything on Carl's managers' report? All right. City clerk's file?
Nothing.
Attorney's file? Not here.
Pub vacation.
Future agenda items? Mayor council comments? Dick?
Yeah, just two. First, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody, because we won't be back together again until then. Uh, and then the last comment is there were several comments made tonight about smoking marijuana on the streets. And I, I don't know, maybe the manager could work with the police chief and see if we have the ability, because I assume we're the one that's got a police to, to watch where this is going on at and maybe, uh, encourage them not to do it, like throwing them in the creek or something. I don't know. But anyway.
Fire homes. You were smoking. I thought.
Send all your letters to.
Anyway, that's all I got.
Um, Judy?
Um, nothing from your honor, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody and see you next year.
General Lee?
Happy New Year, Merry Christmas. See you next year.
Julie?
The Citizens Academy graduation was two decades ago. Many were great. I've already heard from a lot of people who are interested in doing it. I made it, so.
So do you have the music? Have you, please, let's start singing. That's your walk in.
Bob?
Yeah. My condolences to the family of the individual that, uh, happened to get struck and passed away due to the crosswalk incident. Um, but I want people to remember there's at least two individuals in that tragedy and it's also the, the individual that, that was driving the car. Uh, no one ever means to get involved in something like this and they have. But, uh, my condolences go out and, um, it's just a tragedy thing, so hopefully out of the tragedy, we can build something that's good. And, uh, again, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Dave?
Yeah. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Be safe out there as well. An interesting thing kind of related, we're talking about with the, with the situation here. I was reading in the, uh, print super newspaper online this week that they're very concerned because they've had eleven pedestrians hit in the last year, seven of which were in crosswalks. So they're obviously getting the same issues we are. Yeah, I think we were all, um, saddened to hear about Mr. Fulgencia and some of us, you know, knew him just by, in passing. I say I have to make one comment and that is, um, shortly after it happened, I got, got an email from someone saying, some homeless guy got hit. And I just wanted to say, you know, Ron Fulgencia was not homeless. He lived in Ketchikan.
Mark?
Earlier this year, we'd actually had one of these meetings, improvements to the pedestrian crosswalks had come up. And it had been determined by the state that we didn't meet the criteria. Remember, one of them was forty-five miles per hour and some others because we just didn't fit that bill. Uh, especially down there by Tatsudas. I know there's multiple areas around town, but especially down there by Tatsudas. Now we've had multiple really awful experiences happen down there. And I realize it's a state highway, but at some point, the right thing to do is take action. And if they're not going to do something to improve the safety of the residents of the city, then maybe we should. It might be better to ask for forgiveness and permission in the future. Beyond that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I look forward to another great year with all you folks.
Thanks, Mark.
Say it like you mean it.
What makes you think I did it?
Carl, I'll speak to you. Um, you know, the Stedman thing is a, uh, because, you know, we're doing, um, you know, this next summer, they'll be doing the paving. From the, is it next summer? I mean, it's coming summer.
You're talking.
Not there. Two years out.
What? Is it two years?
The state's project?
Front mount that.
It'll be done over a two, six, two-year season.
So in, I mean, after the end of next cruise season, we'll start doing the sidewalks. Mark, do you want?
Stop asking questions, you're on there.
Mark Hilsen, Public Works Director, um, that project, uh, the contract's about to be awarded. So they're going to start with, uh, concrete work shortly.
And they, they're doing the sidewalks just in the downtown. They don't go all the way to Tatsudas, do they?
Um, no, they don't go all the way to Tatsudas with this project. No.
Okay. Then when they do the paving, how far does it go? Does it go all the way to Tatsudas or past it or before the crosswalk?
Deermount.
So it just goes, you're right by?
And then they have another project coming on the heels of this one, uh, from Deermount South, right?
So how can we connect into the state and get, you know, we're getting those crosswalks down there by the hospital in Bigor? Can we get that figured out that we're, they were going to do that?
We're still in discussions and we haven't reached any conclusions.
So can we get into discussions on either having, um, something for the crosswalk? Why did?
We're, we're going to bring something back to you tentatively scheduled for the second meeting in January for the hospital in Vigor and we will probably add Stedman and Deermount to that discussion.
Yeah, we should make it sort of an emergency thing because we've had incidents down there and now we have a death, so I want them to know. And then also the other thing is the speed limit sign down there, you know, everything drops to twenty. Um, maybe we could get the speed limit from people coming from, um, south of town to code to twenty sooner. I know it's thirty or thirty-five coming from the Coast Guard base. I don't know where, I can't remember where it switches.
Yeah, it's thirty.
It's thirty.
Maybe you can get to twenty a little sooner before you get to Tatsudas.
That's state.
That is state, too. Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it's all state.
I mean, the state did go ahead and switch, you know, out there after hearing COVID. It used to be fifty miles an hour after they put that pavement and now it's thirty-five, so.
Well, we'll get it all summarized and bring something.
Yeah, there needs to be a period, sort of. Yeah.
Along those lines, I guess I'd be curious, um, the issue came up of, 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 of the little flashing sign that says, you know, you're doing twenty-five. How much do those cost? You gave back to us on this. Maybe you might want to look at a couple more of those. I mean, they, 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 they seem to be calling.
The problem right now is they let us do that a number of years ago and they're, they're present positions. They're not going to allow it again. When we suggested, you know, the hospital in Deermount, correct me if I'm wrong, but the response we got were the reflective flags on both sides where you like put the flags.
Yeah, that's correct.
Measure crossing. That was something they appeared to be interested in.
And those are, there's, they make them solar, but what's great about them, because I saw them in Shalaya, is you can see that thing flashing thirty feet, fifty feet back.
The, the electric.
So you know someone's in there.
I, right now, we will try again.
Of course, as, as, as Mr. Flora mentioned, they, they had a whole bunch of criteria. Well, one of those criteria has now been touched. Because remember they said, well, no one's died. Well, okay.
Someone now.
Has died, so therefore maybe.
Put them on wheels and chain them down.
The, um, cook question. Um, now I lost what I was going to say. It's too late for me now.
All right. Anybody else? I'll finish my comments. The, um, I wish every.
And they just kept going.
Must be getting old. I just can't watch it for nine o'clock. All right. Where am I? Okay. So everybody have a Merry Christmas. I, um, you know, Christmas is, um, you know, celebrating a birth of, uh, in the Christian faith, which I'm definitely a big part of. And I've been, um, you know, touched profusely ever since Ja, June when I was, um, diagnosed with ca, the cancer. So, um, it's been a more beautiful Christmas season for me and I hope it is for others and they can, um, really understand what it's all about and we'll talk about it again during, um, Easter. So I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and, um, have a wonderful time with family and friends. And I'll see you guys in January and I'll miss you and I enjoy working with you, so.
Oh, and get out and check out the lights.
And nobody's brought me a present yet, but hey, I'm not going to bring that. We have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.